All right, thank you. 6:34, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in this little liberty and justice world.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please, Jay.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwerer is absent. Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Norby?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here.
Thank you very much. Can I please get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, Item A, September 17th, 2024 workshop minutes. Item B, September 17th, 2024 HRA meeting minutes. Item C, September 17th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Item D, September 17th, 2024 closed meeting minutes. Item E, general claims of $1,435,663.43. Item F, HRA claims of $3,125.43. Item G, purchased energy kits and LED holiday lighting. Item H, special event permit for Hangtime Board Shops Ride Remember Event. And item I, public works surplus items for auction.
Thank you very much. Would any council member like to pull anything? If not, can I get a motion to? Do I need to do anything else?
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
Councilmember Cole, second?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next, open to the public at 6:36. John Schmal.
Mayor, council, evening. I can't let it go, this cancellation of the Zoom. And I would have thought it was going to be, when I got up here and said something about it previous two times, that we have a mayor that does use a handicap spot. So this was going to be, when I said this is going to be a detriment to handicap people who can't get in, there's going to be a person that's going to say, yeah, this is very important to me, too. And you have to admit that you worked with someone on the planning council who was adamant about making sure that anything that came before the planning council commission that had to do with handicap, she was very adamant about making sure that it complied. I thought there was an aura about thinking about the handicap that couldn't make it and would be able to Zoom in and also comment by making, raising your hand in Zoom. But it didn't work. But I was still going to say something about it because as 100% disabled veteran, that would be very important to me when it gets to that point because of the cancer. So I'm not giving up. I will continue to say something. And tonight, I thought, well, maybe they did change. So I went into the website to see, put in Zoom. Well, first of all, for agendas and minutes, I don't have my reading glasses. Meeting opened, it talks about, when you go to the website, about using Zoom. Still on the website. I don't know why things like that are happening. But also, it gives you the links when you put Zoom in. And council meetings, Zoom from tiny URL gives you the URL for Zooming in. What is this? Just trying to stick it to someone to see if they can Zoom in and it doesn't work and then frustrate the hell out of them? I don't get it. I just don't get it. Is that what an extraordinary city does? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City business action items and recommendations. First item up is the Housie Park reconstruction project and approved change order number one. We got engineer Morgan Dolly here to speak to that. Morgan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, these, if it pleases the council and the mayor, these next two items, so Item A and B go together. So if it's okay, I might present on both and then you'd have two separate action items. Is that acceptable? Yeah? Okay. So this is both regarding the Housie Courts reconstruction project, which has reached its conclusion. The first item consideration is change order number one. The second order of consideration is the acceptance of the final payment for the contract, so closing out the contract. So the project is finished in accordance with the city's requirements to not approve a final payment above the contract amount. That's what change order number one is here for. Essentially, there was some additional quantities of things within the contract, such as removal of payments, pavements, some tree protection fencing, additional linear footage therein, and also some erosion prevention blanket for the area. But one thing that wasn't done, which was subtracted out, is transplanting of two trees. So that was included in the contract but was not necessary. Ultimately, the net change order total is $640, so not a significant impact on the contract amount, but it does result in a new contract amount of $290,454.75. And that is reflected on the second item for consideration, which is the final payment to the contractor. All the work has been completed and accepted by the city. And so with the authorization of this final payment, which includes change order number one, contract will be closed. And as a reminder, this work was supported by a DNR outdoor recreation grant, which I believe was a 50-50 match. And so the project costs have been mitigated by that additional grant money which was received for this project. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. As a reminder, two action items. Number one would be approval of change order number one as recommended. Number two would be to authorize final payment by resolution for the Housie Courts reconstruction project. So again, I'll stand for any questions council might have.
My only question is, you mentioned the grant. Does a change order affect, do we have to resubmit the grant or do anything?
No. Councilmember Norby, not to my understanding, there shouldn't be anything that is necessary to change other than submit, you know, the final cost information to other documentation as required. And then the city should, once approved by the DNR, receive reimbursement. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can I get a motion to, for the first one, for the approval for the change order?
So moved.
So moved. Council, excuse me, councilmember Wong?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Can I get a motion for the second to pay the voucher for number two, final?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you, Morgan. Appreciate it.
So Item C is the 2025 Enterprise Fund budgets, which we've gone over unless you guys had any further questions with that. We'll move on to Item D for the Enterprise Fund, 10-year financial plans.
Sounds good.
All right. Turn that over to you, Dan. Finance director, Mr. Winnick.
Good evening again, Mayor and city council members. It can be hard to see these, so you're better looking at your packet for the 10-year financial plans of the enterprise funds. It will begin on page 102 of 119 of your council packet. And so what is done here for all of these 10-year financial plans, which have been done for the past couple of years, is that we make assumptions on the changes in revenue that we would need. What that's going to represent is that what, that's what your rate increase would end up having to be to generate that revenue. And then for expenditures, we put a percentage in there of a cost increase. And then we look at it from the cash perspective on the bottom part to it. We need to maintain a target minimum working capital. And what that's usually calculated at is 33% of the annual budget plus any debt because debt is, the debt payment is due on February 1st. So you need to have those funds available. And then it'll show if it's going to be over or under. And again, these are just projections. This changes every single year. If we perform better than what we anticipate, then we update this and kind of show. What you're going to see is, and you can see on the expenditure line item, it's the capital line item. That's huge. And you're going to see that when we get into looking at the capital improvement plan. And so much of that capital is due to your street projects that are happening out there. And so the capital that's shown in the capital improvement plan is the latest update that WSB has prepared for us. And then even the bond funds are the latest ones that were shared with city council. So again, those bond funds will hit the three enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and surface water. And as you can see here, the water fund, and you heard earlier Ron mention that in 2028, you can see there's almost a $4.9 million capital expenditure and a large part of that is due to the water tower. So to be able to afford what's in that capital plan, this is the result of what you would end up having to do. And so there is no rate increase in 2025, but you're seeing 4% increase in '26 through 2032. And then we would be at zero for '33 and '34. That's what the water fund would look like. Wastewater is going to be very similar onto it. Let me get this. You're going to see that you would end up having to have 4.75% increases in '26 all the way through 2034. At the end of that, you're over your working target, target working capital only by $32,000. And so again, if you look at that capital line item, you're seeing every year, you know, in '25 is 1.4, you know, almost 1.5 is over 1.5, almost 1.6, and it continuously increases. And that's that, you know, the pavement preservation component that will drive that up. If we look at the electric fund, just because of the projections of what the costs would be, and if there's, the contractual services is a little bit different than all of the others, we hold that 3.5 on everything else, but contractual services, we got a 2.25. That would be what the MMPA would raise, right? And again, for 2025, you're hearing from John that there doesn't appear to be an increase for coming into 2025. But for projection wise, we put something in there for the future years. If it doesn't materialize, again, it's a living document, would then not require a rate increase for the electric fund. And again, the cash balance that's being used here is, you know, short $4 million because that's really borrowed to other funds and it hasn't come in yet. So if we were to adjust that, and which I will do, and we have, we'll have a separate item in a workshop, just kind of discussing the proposed idea of transferring that $2 million and what kind of impact it would have on the electric fund, what it would have on surface water, and what it would have on the wastewater funds. And we can kind of see that. But you can see that there's increases, you know, across the board in that. Surface water has higher ones. And again, you know, total revenue, the charges for services is half of what you're going to see and what you saw in the water and the wastewater. Yet there are significant costs on every one of these road projects that go into the surface water. And you heard Ron talk about it, that Watershed District will make requirements for, you know, a holding pond or some, and they can be some significant costs that end up coming into there. But again, the capital that's being shown in these are, again, everything's coming from what WSB has prepared. And again, it's shown in our capital improvement plan, which we'll go into great depth coming up in our, hopefully in our next meeting. Solid waste, to maintain, you know, this year, we're going to buy down the capital or the fund balance, but we're going to need to have some rate increases because right now the contracts are at 3% on an annual basis. Unless we go, when we go out for the RFP, if we get better rates than we currently have. In solid waste, the, you know, a part of the bigger driving factor is the tip fees. We have no control over those. And they've been going up, if not, this year, I don't think they go, I think they're up that as high, but they're usually somewhere, they've been going up about double digits. So again, that's a huge driving factor to why we're going to need to have, even though we don't have capital in here, we need to increase the rates. And then fiber optics, we just have zero across the board. And that's why we've been showing it for a number of years. But you can see, if we don't change that or we don't generate more revenue, it's going to take us even longer than 20 years to pay off that $2 million. That's a deficit in that fund. So that kind of gives you kind of a look of where we're at. And these have been done consistently since I've been here. You know, we established this three years ago to kind of give, kind of a look of how we look into the future, to be able to help city council make those tough decisions from a budgetary standpoint and where we're moving forward to. Ideally, we'd like to see no rate increases across the board. That's just not a reality of where we're at, unfortunately, because we do have a lot of infrastructure that we, you know, that we end up having to cover. There is a part, a piece, that I do want to say publicly, since we've had some comments regarding our infrastructure and our special assessments. I have never stated I'm for or against special assessments. I'm not saying that it was a bad decision or a good decision. It is a funding source. I believe at the time that city council made that decision back, and I think in December of 2019, to go away from the special assessments, they were given a plan from the finance department. That plan was never put into motion. It was never put into motion. And on top of it, because what it required to do was to take some revenue sources from some franchise fees to pay and offset the costs. That's never been done. And in addition to that, we've changed the plan significantly. The capital plan, there was never a 10-year capital plan that the city prepared. It was just road reconstruction plans. Those road reconstructions only had major reconstructions every other year. We saw last year, WSB prepared a very good document for us to look. Doing a every other year major reconstruction, our road rating went down. That's where last year, they proposed, and city council passed, that went into effect this year, the pavement management program component to it. We started it off by funding $1.1 million from the electric fund to be able to do that. And now the suggestion is that we need to even up that a little bit more from the $1 million to maybe $2 million. And that's what's being reflected in all of our documents. So it isn't just the fact that we went away from special assessments. That was a funding source, but there's other complicated contributing factors. But the plan that was presented to city council at the time was never implemented into it. This city council, and there's two members that were here from the very beginning, are the ones who suggested to me to look into that and to push for that. And so that's where we started making dedicated levy for that. Now, as far as special assessments are concerned, there are cities that are moving away from it. I went and looked at the city of Edina. One of the legal challenges that gets proposed for special assessments is that the property has to benefit from the improvement. They're looking at that in a major reconstruction of a roadway for a resident, that it's coming to the point of, because of cost increasing, increases, that it's coming to be like $45,000 per resident. That's hard to justify that you have gotten an improvement to your property of $45,000. So it's even on their website, Edina's website, they're moving away from that. And they're going to be having a plan very similar to us, where you're going to shift it over to the levy. They look at it that it'll probably take them about 15 to 16 years to fully shift that over. So, bottom line, not for or against special assessments. I think the decisions that the city council have made have been the right ones at the point in time. I think we, and this, really, it's this city council, I'll collectively say, because I'm a part of this "we," that we've come up with a very good plan as far as levying that's dedicated to our streets to help our infrastructure. And I think we need to keep on that path and keep moving forward. And so I wanted to bring that up because there's been a lot of comments. There's been some data requests that have come out for that. And I did want to make sure that we do address that in a public forum. And hopefully, I've given it justice. And it's definitely not anything that's against the prior city council in making that decision or anything. Circumstances have changed.
Thank you for clearing that up. I appreciate it because there has been a lot of letters, myself, too, from different things, so, understanding. So when you're saying they're phasing it out, they're not getting rid of the assessments, they're kind of weeding down as they get up there. And we kind of just went cold turkey.
We kind of went cold turkey. And then, but didn't have anything. At least what, you know, their website is saying that 15, 16 years, they'll be doing away with the special assessments, I think.
All right.
And there's, there's good reasons for that. And as a council member, Norby, kind of shaking his head, that is the legal ground that many people do challenge it onto, is that my property has not benefited from the cost that you're charging. Yet other cities will have, there are special assessment policies that'll state that they need, they're going to, their goal is to generate 40% to 50% of the construction cost from special assessments. Two weeks ago, I pulled out of the St. Paul Pioneer Press, because when you do a special assessment, you have to have a public, it needs to go on public hearing, and you have a public notification. And I think it was, and I don't know if it was the city of Cottage Grove or the city of Inver Grove Heights, but they had a number of special assessments, let's say five of them. So they showed you what the estimated total cost of the project was and what they anticipated being received from the special assessments. And every single one of them was right around that 50% range. So special assessments is a funding source. It isn't the only contributing component to it. The decision at the time was they had to, you had to develop a plan to offset that loss of revenue from special assessments. And that just wasn't done. And so we have, we do have it in place. And I got to give so much credit to the city council for recognizing that, especially as we've gone through the capital improvement plan and the discussions that we've had. And I give great thanks to our engineer, WSB, Morgan in particular, that has allowed us to ask him those questions and to kind of show and make recommendations for our city council to make our roads for our residents, you know, adequate. Because we're behind that right now. And just making, you know, keeping, making improvements, so.
Well, thanks for the explanation, too. I understand once I, you know, once we start talking about it and just, you know, that much money, if we can get to that point where it can be evenly, you know, spread over where people, I was, the last group for the lake around Silver Lake, it was $8,000, was quite a hefty chunk to be able to come up with. But I'm, I see the need for the improvements, but, you know, being able to, you know, as long as we can fund it, as long as we don't, you know, we can keep money going and we're not keep falling behind. Because that's the biggest thing, as we see in our streets, is where, so if we can do that, that's awesome.
I mean, when we started this budget conversation, Dan presented what has happened with the percent tax increase to the residents of the city. And I can't remember how many years back he went. It was probably pre-pandemic at this point in time. North St. Paul was about in the middle of our comp cities that we looked at. And over time, we've moved to the highest, if not the second highest paid, per, for our city. One of those moves was the elimination of special assessments for roads. It's a difficult conversation. You definitely do benefit by having a road in front of your house that's pavement, not blacktop, or I'm sorry, not gravel. So yes, there is, but what's that value worth? I believe at the time that we walked away, or the council prior to, the two of us coming on board voted to get away from it, it was about a 20%. And what Dan has brought up is, a lot of cities are 50%, 40%. I would like to have an open dialogue of bringing back special assessments, putting caps and guardrails around what they might look like, so that it might be a 10% until we get over some of these big levy hikes that we've got. A million dollar project at a 10% special assessment cuts us down one full percentage point. That's one percentage point that all the residents save. I would also like to take a look at capping the resident. You fell into it when you were the last one, your corner lot. You got dinged both sides. Let's, let's look at that as where your mailbox points or whatever. That's the street you're responsible for, the other street isn't. I'm just looking at ways, and the three of you remaining and the two new council members coming on board are going to be faced with a lot of tough decisions. I had the opportunity to sit through a workshop that had to do with budget, budget restraints and budgetary things. And a lot of them came around the lines of fees and assessments. As a city, Dan, and I can't, I apologize, I can't remember the other two that you showed, but I remember street assessment was one of the three pillars that moved us from the middle of the pack to, towards the highest end. And I can't remember what the other two were. But we, as a council, have to make some tough decisions. We can somewhat lower the trend or slow it down. You know, I've got a couple other here. I don't know when the right time to bring that up is, but I have other fees to come up with, potential ways to save from a levy increase, whether it be this year, food for thought for, you know, the three of you going forward.
No other cities do franchise fees that go directly to roads, directly for those. There's a couple cities that do.
And we do have franchise fees, I think, on a lot of our things now. So those are already, unfortunately, those are already being budgeted.
I think you make a really good point. I mean, as you said, Edina, which is a very affluent community, they're phasing it out over 16 years. We went cold turkey. There's a lot of ground to make up. And I would encourage this group to explore scenarios that could be, maybe help offset maybe the levy a little bit. It could be time bound. I mean, just exploring those different options because there are some big ticket items coming our way here at the city. And it's definitely something that will, I think, yeah, you'll have to make big decisions on. And so that revenue is going to be really critical.
One of the other things that concerned me, I know with levy, I was able to come together with the money, but for people that can't, then it goes on their property taxes and they pay interest on that, isn't that correct, for the levies?
For special assessments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant, said the wrong word. Apologize.
Yeah, you're granted a period that you can pay it and you can always prepay it. But yeah, then it'll go on your property taxes and usually it's at a 6% annual increase.
So?
Percentage.
There's a percentage rate if they can't pay them off then?
Yeah.
10 years, wasn't it, Aaron? Longer?
I think it can be a little bit longer than that. Depends on.
So that kind of concerns people that can't afford it, then they're paying interest on something they couldn't afford.
Yes. It's, it's a, it's a tough, tough, a real tough discussion. And I think what councilmember Cole-
And I think what council member Cole and council member Wong has said tonight is, is we do need to look at scenarios. We do need to look at those options because the reality is we went straight for it. And, yeah, it's now put that burden on all of our residents because we're levying it. So it's for every property owner, whether they're benefiting on that improvement for that year or not. And we are. We're the second highest in, in tax rate for Ramsey County. Now, there's a part to that. Council member Bernard via, yes, we, we do get some fiscal disparity dollars back. But there becomes a point where are we pricing individuals out of their homes? And this community does have a lot of fixed income individuals. And so it's a tough, tough, tough balance.
And having that, you know, it's a conversation. I think we should have that on for a longer time. And paying interest is concerning to me too, for people, residents.
Any other questions regarding, yep?
Slightly in a different topic, I am uncomfortable with my understanding of how TIF fees affect enterprise funds. Is that a simple conversation or is that a long workshop or you and I have lunch?
Oh, it's a real quick, easy explanation of how it, how TIF.
You could have got a lunch out of it.
I know, right? Oh, that's a real long, long.
Got to think of lunch before you do anything.
I'm so sorry. That's a long, long discussion. Well, I'll give you a quick one and then over lunch, I'll give you the more of the detail.
There you go.
To, in two particular projects, and it's not the norm, it's the exception, that the, the city didn't do pay-as-you-go type of notes where the city is not obligated for anything. The city actually fronted money up and then is going to be repaid through the tax increment that's received on the projects themselves. That was one of the two items, of the three items that was discussed, that there's some development decisions that were done in the past that, you know, whether, whether the city bonded for money or loaned the money, that'll then get repaid through tax increment financing through the district over time. So there are special resolutions that city council had to pass, and they did, to do that, to make those loans. You just can't make, you know, just can't borrow. It has to be, city council has to be a resolution that goes to it. So in those two circumstances, that's what occurred at, at that point in time. Now, what we've done, you know, the most recent tax increment district, which is the Article VII site, is that we didn't, we didn't take any additional risk on ourselves. There's a pay-go note onto it. And then city council also, because we had some extra tax increment and there was special legislation that was passed that we pooled some funds to be able to, to give them a little extra money to make sure that the project could actually happen because it wouldn't have cash flowed and wouldn't have worked without it. So city council passed those two items. So we have no loan. We have no bonds on those. If the increment doesn't come in, it's not on us. That's a risk. It's all on the developer's side.
And that started with this Article VII project going forward now.
Yes.
The way we do it. We're not, we're not in the, we're not in the business of loaning people money.
Right. City council didn't formally say that, but there was enough city council members that spoke to me to, to, that we, that was our direction we were moving into. And so that's what we've, we, we came up with a way on that Article VII to be able to do that and keep it that way.
So the fees you mentioned, that was because they use the, the balance to front the TIF money? And they're getting repaid by the, the TIF increment? What's the phrase for when we get the TIF money?
Tax increment.
So rather than having an, like we're doing now, a longstanding TIF payment to the developer, we fronted the money and now we're, those funds are getting slowly paid back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And in those projects, we did put some safeguard for the city. And that's where we had minimum assessment agreements onto them. In other words, and I think we had a gentleman discuss that.
You're right.
While back. And so what a minimum assessment is that property values could plummet. And that property value can never go below that agreed amount for the duration until the taxing, you know, until it's, it's been paid off. So we're, once it reaches its full value after, we're going to get that money year after year after year. It's just going to take, you know, the life of the district, you know, can be twenty, twenty-five years to, to get all of that money repaid.
But one.
And we do have interest.
But once they're paid back, there are no additional fees that are going to be incurred unless the city council votes for something like that again, correct?
Correct. And, and usually when a TIP district is set up for its duration, once they use those, it's done. It can't be extended beyond that. So.
Thank you. I'll still buy lunch.
I, yeah, I still get lunch. So much more, I got to tell you. Good with, good with these? So what I'm hearing from there is that definitely we'll, we'll look at those three funds as far as that, you know, if we were to, to look at that potential transfer from the electric and help out those three funds because I think it'll have an impact and we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have to be as aggressive on a couple of these funds as far as rate increases into the future. So we'll see how that's going to look. We'll start to look at some of the special assessments components to it. I don't think we necessarily will get it incorporated into this year, but it could be possible. I don't think so because, because there's a whole public process that needs to take place on, on some of those things. And there's some other questions that, you know, that we'll end up having to, to go through. But it's definitely something that we could then head up moving into the future. But I'll run, I'll start to get, gather and put together some scenarios that really are more of validation of what council member Cole has, has, has said. Because it, again, ten percent on a million dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, there's a levy percent that's reduced. So we'll just, we'll look at that street maintenance projections that I had shown earlier in the year. And we'll put on, if we had a different funding source, what that would be as far as an impact and what the levy impact would be onto that. So with that, that kind of, if there's no further questions, it kind of wraps up that item on, on the 10-year financial plans for the enterprise funds.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Sorry about that. All right, item E, 2024 Statement of Revenue Expenditures, Year-to-Date Funding Updates from Dan.
This is the Dan Show tonight.
This is the Dan Show.
Got the big chair.
I like this big chair. It's, we'll start on page 110 of 119 for the general fund.
Thank you for page numbers.
Yes.
I got the page numbers right this time. That's the scary part to it. So when we, we look at this, this, this first one's for the general fund. The 2024 adopted budget is what it is as of, you know, through end of August. Those are the actuals. It'll show you what the, the variance to the actual are. To me, I look at that and it's kind of like it's really meaningless information. And the reason why I say that is because it doesn't tell you what's been paid, what hasn't been paid. I mean, that could be reflective of only being paid three months' worth and you've got nine more months to go. So what I try to do on a conservative basis is do a projected outstanding. And, and looking, so I go through each and every detailed disbursement and try to make a projection. So I'll actually look at to make sure that, you know, you've, you've, you've made eight monthly payments if something's on a monthly payment basis. If not, then I'll, I'll, you know, project out and include what hasn't been in there. And I do take a conservative approach to it. At the end of the day, what am I looking at right now? I'm looking at our general fund as being plus two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. So we have a, you know, on the revenue side, we're about two-hundred-thousand dollars short. Obviously, the biggest component to that is permits. And permits, if you look at that, it's a reduction of the revenue. But if you go down and look at building inspections on the expenditure side, you're going to see that's a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars on the good. The reason for that is that we pay a, we, we collect the permitting and then per the contract with our, the company that does our inspections, we pay a percentage to them. So our expenditures are going to be lower than our revenues and that obviously what we projected. We just haven't had the same volume. Piece I want to kind of look at that is that, if you remember, when we moved over to a different company, our, our rates changed significantly. And that was after the budget was already prepared. So our revenues and our expenses are basically, we've overestimated on revenue and overestimated on the expenditures, but they're not too far. They're, they're, they're fitting together nicely. But again, on the revenue side, I think what, what is saving us this year and really is, is the other revenues. And the other revenues include investment income, which we don't aggressively budget for, and then market value adjustment. And the market value adjustment is because interest rates are coming down and our investments are booked at a higher. But we have to be cautious on that because it's really, we don't realize those gains and/or losses, but we have to reflect them in our financial statements and we reflect them on a monthly basis. And so if we go back two years ago, when rates were, were on the fall side to it, we were seeing huge market values, negative numbers on market values. Last year, they did very well as the rates were still on the upward swing. We did very, very well as a city. They're still going up. Now they're starting to get up beyond where our negatives are. So we have to watch ourselves because probably next year we'll see them start to go into the, the negative side to it or the year after that because we still have feds that will end up cutting rates for a while. So, but all in all, I think we've done, we're doing very good on our budgets. I'm not projecting anybody to be in the negative at this point in time. And so for the general fund, if there's any specific questions on, on anything, I do have a couple of pages that, on this one, that gives a little bit more detail of, of each department and how they're doing by category of personal services, supplies, contractual services, capital and transfers. And then also I show, you know, the budget and the actuals where we're at to date for revenue. But, so good news, eight months through, we still look very positive. And again, I do this on a conservative basis. So I anticipate, or at least hope, that we'll actually be, you know, we'll have, be better than the two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand.
Nicely done. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's a good guy.
Mm-hmm.
And then we take a look at our enterprise funds. And the first one that we have up here is, is water. And I'm projecting that our revenue is going to be short by about a hundred and five. Anybody want to guess why our revenue is going to be lower on our water this year?
Because there are rain.
Yeah. Except for in September. But yeah, exactly. And so our, our, our actual usage is, is down significantly on the water. But we have some savings on the expenditures. We're not, it doesn't look like we will expend everything on that side to it. We were, from a budgetary standpoint, looking at increasing the fund balance six-hundred-and-eighty-two. We're still looking at about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars increase on the water. So again, you know, it's only the, the variance from budget to the, and with the projection is thirty-three thousand dollars down. So not too bad, even with the, the loss in consumption. Waste water. Now, wastewater, even though consumption was down, it's just because of how wastewater is, is charged is done. It's, it's done on an averaging basis of three months. Those are set through the year. We'll see this change next year because of the consumption pattern being down. But we're looking at being up relatively pretty good. You know, it's not in the charges of services, it's for the other revenues, which again are market value and, and investment income. But significantly, our revenues should be up from where we had budgeted. We were positive three-hundred-thousand expenditures. We're, we should be sixty-one thousand dollars under. So where we're looking at increasing the fund balance about forty-one thousand, we should increase it about almost four-hundred-thousand in this wastewater fund. And again, these numbers aren't translated into the financial plans until the year gets closed out. But that's where, that those 10-year plans are, are a living document, which then would show that for the wastewater, we won't need what was projected as an increase in there into the future for rate increases. The electric fund, revenues projecting down about forty-eight thousand dollars. Again, the electrical consumption is down this year. But again, other revenues have almost offset that loss in revenue. And then you can see our expenditures, I think, are, you know, are projected to be significantly under where we're at. And we were looking at a, a change of fund balance of being one-point-one to the negative, the bulk of that being the transfer. Now we're only looking at about five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand to the negative. So we've improved our position about five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is what I'm projecting. And again, I, it's a projection. It's an estimate. There's, I will, I will never guarantee it, but hopefully it'll be pretty good and hopefully we do better than what I show. Surface water, again, revenues up about almost a hundred-and-seventy-thousand. Again, so much of it's underneath the investment, the interest on our investments and our investment income and our market values. And then our expenditures were under slightly or under thirty-two thousand. So where we were budgeting an increase in the fund balance of about sixty thousand, we should end up being somewhere closer to two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand or two-hundred-thousand dollars better than we, we've got budgeted. So far, everything is really good news. I like this. And then, then solid waste has to come in. And so we're looking at, on our revenues, we're about forty-two thousand dollars better. But on the expenditure side, we're, we've got some negatives. We're going to, we're going to end up being negative. We'll end up having to have an adjustment onto that. And again, that's just, we've added some additional, added a apartment complex that's driven our costs up on that side. And I'll have to look at that one a little bit more in detail to find out what's driving. And I'll have to look at that one a little bit more in detail to find out what's driving those costs up $68,000 higher. Thought I had looked at that, but off the top of my head, I can't remember why, why that one is. So where we were looking at being $103,000 negative in change of fund balance, we're looking now at about 129,000 negative or $26,000 in a worse position than, than we had budgeted. And then fiber optics is pretty, pretty close. On the revenue side, we're only $2,200 under where we thought. Our expenditures are about, you know, $1,600 higher. So we're about $4,000 difference. So that one, there's not a lot of moving parts to that. And so we're pretty close onto that. But again, we were thinking of increasing our, our fund balance 110. This increase is about 107. And so that's all six of the fiber optics of what they're looking like at the end of August. And again, the projections I do, you know, there's a lot of moving parts and I try to be on the conservative side. But I don't know, you know, all of the spending decisions, because there's a lot of line items that are not linear. You don't know what's already been planned or what's in the motion to be spent. Or if there's, you know, we, we heard from, you know, Ron with the Public Works, you know, they, Ron and Randy do a great job of monitoring their budget on a continuous basis. And they'll never go and overspend earlier in the year. But as the year goes and they feel more and more comfortable, they'll start to take care of some of those sewers that, you know, that Ron had been doing. And so I can't project, I can't, I don't know for sure what's on the pipeline or not. I try to give them enough room to be able to do those things when my projections. So I keep my fingers crossed, I think we're pretty close. We have been in the, in the past two years on, when I've given the projections that we've, we've come pretty down, close to an, or in a better position.
You mentioned that solid waste, one with an apartment. Were we of any concern with another apartment complex coming online? Is there, is it to do with just, you know, is there any concern with that coming? But for the solid waste, you mentioned that there was something with one of the.
Well, I have to look a little bit deeper. I, I know that we added a complex here in August timeframe to it. Obviously, if, you know, I'll go back and just kind of look at this. Obviously if we're, you know, we budgeted to basically subsidize the operations through our fund balance because it's negative. So obviously whoever gets added on to it, our expenditures are higher than what they're being charged for revenues. So that would be where the concern would be. But I need to do a deeper dive on what's driving that $68,000 negative on the contractual services. And obviously that would require a budget amendment that would be brought forth with all the full information to city council for their approval onto it.
Thank you.
But all in all, I, I think from the general fund standpoint and our enterprise funds, I think we're, we're doing pretty good.
Because wastewater is calculated on a previous bill or a summary of previous bills, how is wastewater billed for a new development?
That's a good question and I don't really know the answer to that. Normally what they do is they'll take the consumption that's done in December, January, February. And then they do the calculation off of that. They do a averaging and then that becomes what is charged through the year. So how would you do it with a brand new one? I don't know. I'll get back to you. I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask my expertise who are utility billing coordinator, who's been here for many years in the city. Barb Helsman knows everything inside and out and I will get that information back to you. That's a good question. I have no idea.
That's where I was kind of going by with this new one coming on. Of course they're coming at the right time of year because that's when it's coming up, the assessments. If you, if you opened up in April, then there would be a definitely an issue.
Good question. Any other questions from anybody? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all the info.
All right, we'll move on to reports of the city manager and departments. So at a staff meeting today, Public Works been busy working with student belt. They got the basement port and they got it all sealed and insulated. Now they're just waiting for backfill and students will probably be out there soon to start working on it.
Great.
They've started their hydrant flushing. They're about 20% done through the city. They're working with Article VII, got a meeting coming up. Try to get the curbs around the structure figured out before the winter time and plowing starts. Through the tree program and the grant that we got, it looks like all the trees are removed now. There's working on stump removal and replanting of new trees. So that, that went well. Community Development's working with the feasibility study the HGA got for the three parks. They met with Park and Rec, you know, or will be meeting with Park and Rec in October and have a meeting on the ninth and the 10th out at Casey Lake for public input on that as well. Community Development's also working with Ramsey County on a free mattress pickup program through the city. That'll be coming up. More information to come on that in November. Jenny's been working with Gallagher and we'll be meeting with them tomorrow. Be looking at our health coverage rates for next year. Ava's been working with the website. They're looking to update that probably middle of this month. They do that about approximately four years and we're due for that. So we're looking into that, look for some changes coming there that way. Fire and PD will be doing the trunk or treat program, which worked out well. We had lots of candy left over from unfortunately not having a parade due to the severe weather threat. Fire Department's been busy with, they're doing pump and hose testing this next couple of days. It's their yearly test. They're getting ready for the booyah this weekend. Got 560 gallons coming the way for the public to sell. So that always usually sells out. So it's usually nicer when it's a little bit colder weather. It sells a lot better with that. Nice warm soup. And then fire prevention week starts next week, which will be great. They'll be going out to the schools and then we'll have the contest too for you guys to judge, which is awesome. Electric is done for the Taco Bell. Construction trailer's been pulled out. So haven't got a quite open date, but more to come on that. They've been working with the, the construction site up on 17th and Delaware, holding a pole up there. They're getting the water and sewer stubs into the different lots there. And once they finish up the project up by Jennifer Lane in that area, which will be a couple of weeks yet, they'll be moving on to lighting at the Casey Lake and the trail around there a bit. So, yeah, that'll be nice. Just a couple of general updates. The, just a little update on your goats. So we found out a few things about that. So they, they're kind of hands off. They come and drop them off and they're, your baby. I don't know why, but the last couple of places they've done it with, somebody likes to steal a goat. Cops go out and find them, bring them back. Couple of, I mean, it's a nice promotion for your parks because it brings in the public for that, which is good. There's a couple of downsides. We have a couple of ordinances in place that prevent goats from being in parks and also electric fences, which you're required to put up for those fences. And responsibility comes on the city. So Ron, you know, you got to water them. You got to make sure, you know, they're getting plenty.
Daddy.
Yeah. So more to come. They haven't gotten back to us on price yet. I'm sure they're done for the year, but we'll probably hear back from them later, but.
Can you get Randy a, a camper so he can sit out there at night with his shepherd cane and make sure they all stay there?
Also we had a nice, we had a nice article in, like Minnesota City's magazine on our, for public art projects. And our snowy project made it in there. So that's kind of nice to see.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Have the star watch coming up this week on Wednesday from seven to nine. We got 27 people signed up for that. So that'll be nice. We've had a hiatus on that through either the pandemic or unfortunately some cloudy days over the last couple of years that it didn't work out. So it looks like the weather's going to cooperate. That is all I have for you.
Thank you very much. All right, reports from council commissions and committees. Councilmember Arby.
Thank you. The planning commission will meet two days from now on October 3rd in this chamber at 6:30. And the topic of conversation will be a conditional use permit for an application at 2586 Seventh Avenue East.
Thank you.
As for the Arts and Culture Commission, we have no new updates, but we do have a meeting tomorrow here in the chambers at 6:30. And I believe the group will continue their remaining plans for, for 2025 and their budget. That's all.
Well, thank you.
Next EDA meeting is next Tuesday here in chambers on October the 8th at 4 o'clock PM. I do know that two members will be absent, so we may want to shoot an email out to double check the level quorum.
I'm one of them.
Okay. Calling your own shot, huh?
Yep.
That a boy. Anything else?
Got nothing.
All right. Work our way back to you again. Any general business?
Yes. One of our wonderful residents has organized something at the American Legion. So on October 24th at the North St. Paul American Legion Hall at 6:00 PM, there will be a, please be our guest for an informational get to know the people who are running for city council. So I appreciate, or I encourage everyone to come out and get educated that day and try and learn about who you're going to vote for.
Thank you very much.
I have no updates.
Okay, there we go. Councilmember Cole?
I had the opportunity last week to be involved in the POW MIA memorial walk and memorial at Veterans Park. Just a huge shout out to Public Works for what I understand was a lot of last minute requests to help get things pulled off. So shout, shout out to, to Public Works for that, getting chairs and doing some other things to, to make the event a success. And again, a big shout out to the police department as well for traffic control and intersection control as, as everyone made the, the walk from, the, the long walk from the VFW to, to Veterans Park. So phenomenal event. Mayor was the speaker. It was a great event.
Yeah. I agree. Very memorial. It was, it was beautiful weather and it was a great ceremony. So very well. All right. If there's nothing else.
Nothing from you.
Well, I said it was a great event. I don't know if there's nothing else, is there? Am I missing something? I feel like I missed something now that you said that. No, but there was a good event for the, for my POWs. So I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Wong, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, number 15.